And welcome to the May 8th, 2014 Longview City Council Meeting. And we have a fine group of young people here tonight that are gonna lead us in our prayer and pledge. And they're members of the Friendship Youth Department of Friendship Baptist Church. Pastor being DJ Nelson, who's a very good friend of ours. And boy, he did send a fine representation to our meeting tonight. Y'all can smile for us. Remember how I showed y'all to smile? Can I show your teeth? Alright. Okay, would y'all please stand and join us?
We are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts, our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being a source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business world with liberty and justice for all.
Good job! Wow! Thank y'all very much. Okay. City probably gone. Yeah. Hey man, there's just certain things, just a waste of time. Okay, thank y'all. That is a good example of what makes our community great. Thank y'all for coming. Natalie Rabicoff is our first Citizen Comment tonight. And before she gets here, she's asked that she get her entire, she wants three minutes plus three minutes. Is that okay with council? Okay.
I wrote it out so I'd be...
Well, we're, uh, there's your clock, right there.
And what do I do with it?
It'll tell you. Green means go, yellow means, uh-oh, red means stop.
Okay.
Go ahead Natalie, just kidding with you.
Greetings Mayor and City Council. I think it's an appropriate time for me to step forward and tell you, I'm here to simply take no more than a few minutes to say thank you to several people or organizations that supported my efforts with my husband in saving our Texas Eagle passenger train over the last eighteen years here at Citizens Comment. It's the only venue I can accomplish this in because nobody ever sat me down and asked me who did it, and I want to thank them. I will read quickly and I promise, Mr. Dean, not to disappoint you. Can't is not in my vocabulary, never give up is. Persistence and lots of patience also. Eighteen years ago, my friend Griff Hubbard, Amtrak agent in charge, asked me to help him save the train. A big thank you to Griff. He wanted to know what he needed to do because he only worked at the train station and he said he was politically savvy about the train and I was about the community because I've been a volunteer for forty years. I told him to meet with the mayor and ask his consideration to have a meeting with the leaders in our community. I offered to pull it together and did. They came, he'd heard him say each time it stops in Longview, it does not and never will cost the city a penny because it was one of the original stops when Congress gave birth to Amtrak. They thought so little about it, they did not even offer staff to him. The man who ran the chamber asked if he thought he could save it, if Congress was going to kill it, and he said he'd like to try. That day is when I entered this journey that I've been on paying my way. The train comes here every day from Chicago, continues to San Antonio, and three days a week goes from San Antonio to Los Angeles. Amtrak charter buses bring people going north to Longview from Galveston, Houston, and Bozera and Shreveport. All this goes on seven days a week with a manned station. Other communities east and west of us have to pay for it because they weren't an original stop. I'm speaking now because no one elected or staff has given me the opportunity to at least say thank you to those people or organizations over the last eighteen years I have worked with to keep the train here while my husband and I paid our way. I was never offered or asked for any compensation and that was fine because I was only accountable to myself. At that original meeting, I had my friend Mike Ellsworth, the Business Editor at the Longview News Journal there. I'd asked to say thank, I'd like to say thank you to him and a major thank you to those he worked with there now and always because the newspaper has been one of my biggest supporters. I used to tell them, put bad news in, this community doesn't even know they have a passenger train. I kept them aware of what was going on, good and bad news, because we had, to first educate the community, they had a passenger train. Thank you to the television stations also because they were always at different functions and when I'd call them, they showed up with the newspaper. Our media is the best and great to work with, including some I wasn't aware of were covering our train activities. Thank you to our former library director, Dr. Rod Hees, and park director, Paul Borman. I served on their boards and I had their ear whenever I needed their assistance. Thank you to Mike Northcutt, Les Mendocello, Jimmy Howell, Steve Hall, Brian and Linda at All Printing, it was, used to be Quick Copy, to Ron Hutchinson for their support. Thank you to Letco Boards, the first several years of their existence, I would go to their meetings because I was interested and it was, at the same time, the city had a C V B and I was on that board. And we were doing good things for the community in different ways, so I wanted to go to their meetings. I would go out of interest to their meetings and would speak at Citizens Comment to update them on my progress. They were very gracious, gave me the opportunity to do that, and I doubt at first they were very interested. Thank you to the late Paul Bowles, who was the superintendent at the Depot for Union Pacific. He enlightened me a lot about the building. When Joyce Smith, the boss lady from Amtrak, had me do the inaugural run of the train to Mineola. I've never had a committee or any volunteers helping me. I did everything, but when I called people, they were extremely gracious in helping me. So I asked various people to help me pull that major event off. You see, they told me they would bring three hundred and fifty people coming over here to catch the train for the first train trip into Mineola. They sold tickets, it was a fundraiser. They more than doubled the numbers and in their lead bus, they had their honorees Willie Brown, who was a native son, and he was the former mayor of San Francisco, and Noble Wellingham, he was another native son, the co-star of Texas Ranger in the lead bus. I want to thank John Thompson, a former policeman in Longview, for the motorcycle policeman who met them, twelve buses is what they ended up bringing, I had no idea about that, on Interstate twenty to escort them to the depot, plus several more policemen who went to Bonnie Holloway's Emerald Gardens to pick up plants to arrange around the stage. Thank you Bonnie. Others that were involved, a big thank you goes to Jean Jordan at Texas Bank and Trust, Jeff Stein, Mariner's late wife Catherine, from Fabulous Foods, it's now Fabulous Cookies. The Kilgore College Rangerettes, the Kilgore College Jazz Band, Chuck King from Chick-fil-A, he supplied food for those kids from Kilgore. The late Jack Mann who gave us the drinks. Letco Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Longview for furnishing Longview items and publicity for welcome bags. They did that at other times also if I was going out of town to rail meetings and I wanted Longview recognized because there were people from other cities that had people working with them from their communities where I didn't and I didn't want...
Huh? At six? Okay.
I just have a couple more. I'm almost through. Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor.
My friends in Mineola were still and still do constantly promote their community. Their town, and it works for them. I'd like to thank only two politicians that ever offered help and stood by me. Former county judge Mickey Smith, knowing how big this was, kept thirty thousand dollars in his budget should I need it to keep progressing. You see, the only money I had was my husband and my money, and I was a volunteer with no budget. The other one was our former state representative Tommy Merritt, who personally was involved helping me, and his staff in Austin was very involved. These two men truly cared about our city and county. I never touched that thirty thousand, but it sure gave me a good feeling had I needed it to keep the train here. And Representative Merritt's staff were also working on a national level to keep Washington, DC at the F R A aware...
Natalie, excuse me. Keeping with our policy and other people, we keep them to the policy, we've given you the six minutes. We appreciate it, but it's time for us to move forward. Thank you very much.
Okay then.
Next item, council, will be presentation items. Consider proclamation designing, designating May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as National EMS Week. We have, let's see, Hank Hester and crew. Would you please come forward?
I didn't do it, I promise.
Come on up here, Ray. Let me say before we read this, if you see one of these guys out on the road with a boot, put some money in it, put some money, Garrett, you put some in there the other day, didn't you? Alright. You put some in there for me too, huh? Fifty? Well, that's fifty light because the youth that cost me a hundred. Okay, so Emergency Medical Service Week, EMS dedicated for life, May eighteenth through the twenty, through the twenty-fourth, 2014. Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. The members of Emergency Medical Service Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The Emergency Medical Services System consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designated Emergency Medical Services Week. So therefore, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Longview, do hereby proclaim, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Longview. I don't have to tell any of you people how important these people next to me and with me are to us, especially any of you that have actually needed medical services or we have family that have. Every one of our firefighters, the first prerequisite that they are paramedics, a lot of people ask me, why'd they send a fire truck to that wreck? Because they're our first responders. So please give them a big hand and do a great job. Thank you. It didn't flash? That's a good thing. Thank you. Next item is project update of the 2011 Street Bonds, Mr. Roland McPhee.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds. It's my pleasure to give you an update on the City of Longview's 2011 Streets improvements planned. We've reached three years since the actual bond election and it's, so we're basically halfway through the six-year plan and the three issuances of debt that we've had scheduled for this bond election. This was the proposed street project list, which we're all familiar with, which was fifty-two point six million dollars. I'll run through each of these projects. The first one will be an overall slide showing the progress. The red bar denotes where we are on the project status, or the timeline if you will. The diamond for each project shows where we are at this particular point in time. So you can see some of the diamonds have fallen a little bit behind the schedule and some of the others have been ahead of schedule and are nearing, and some have even been completed. A lot of times, the delays in projects are mainly associated with right-of-way acquisition where we try and work out congenial arrangements with the property owners to acquire that. So that's why there is some fluctuation in the schedule, but it's really about to pick up steam as you'll see in the next series of slides. In the proposed oil/dirt street upgrades, this is a map of the oil/dirt street upgrades that were passed as part of the bond election. We've basically completed three of the four phases. The third phase will be coming to City Council for acceptance, and the final phase of these street improvements will bid in July. These are some pictures of some of the roads that we've completed, Hillsdale, Ridgewood, Seventh and Tenth Street, also Ninth Street, Raleigh, and Garner Lane. These roads were oil/dirt roadways, now they're asphalt maintained sections that we can maintain in a better fashion. Magnolia Lane, we actually have the design and the right-of-way acquisition complete on that. This project is slated to bid in June, so hopefully we would be able to bring that for City Council Award in late June or early July. This is North Green Street, which we've been under construction for some time between Cotton and Whaley. I can say that the completion with this section should be complete by late June. We have completed the improvements along Green Street between Methvin and Tyler, as well as between Tyler and Cotton Street. I have some photographs of the finished sections. This is from Green Street on the north side of Cotton Street, looking north. This is Green Street from the railroad overpass, looking south towards Cotton Street. And this is the intersection between Greens, the intersection of Green Street and Tyler Street. So they are in the last phase between Whaley and Methvin at this time. Center Street, this project will be bid once we've completed Methvin Street. We're gonna, we wanted to and have phased this bond project where no more than one street downtown at a time would be under construction. So Methvin Street is actually bidding at the end of this month, May twenty-seventh, so we'll bring that for City Council Award in June. The intersection improvements, which everyone's familiar with, we've actually completed construction of four of the seven locations. Not all of those have been accepted, some have punchless items remaining. There were two at, one at McCann and Hawkins and one at Judson and Hawkins that construction is beginning on at this time. You'll start to see some of the utilities have started relocating, and we've also started some preliminary utility work on the city side. The Hollybrook and Judson intersection improvements will be completed in conjunction with the Magnolia Lane widening because that will include that section.
Let me ask you about these, and I did talk to Keith about it, but had a lot of people ask us like about Pine Tree and George Ritchie, it's real rough, but when the paving season starts, you're gonna be repaving all that as well, correct?
That's correct. The Texas Department of Transportation is coming through and doing surface improvements once they enter that season. Cotton Street, we have the preliminary design complete. We're working on final design, and that is between South Green Street and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Cotton Street is, we have a number of right-of-way issues, a number of easements to acquire because we're constrained by a developed corridor. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be working on, and you should hear from people that we're working on acquisition of easements for water lines and for placement and relocation of the utilities. Hollybrook Drive has been open to two-lane traffic currently, is, the signals are in operation, and the completion of this project, we believe it'll be the end of month, this month or the beginning of June. So that will be restored to traffic for lanes with the turn lanes where it's installed. These are some photos of the ends of the projects, if you will, at Eastman Road and Hollybrook, and also at Hollybrook and Loop two eighty-one, looking back in either direction from those areas. Fenton Road, that's the reconstruction of Fenton Road between George Ritchie Road and Gilmer Road. We have all of the acquisition, the property acquisition and the necessary easements have been acquired. We have ninety percent design, we still have to go through the final Q A, Q C, if you will, on the plans, and we should be bidding that in August of 2014. The design and right-of-way acquisition is complete on South Green Street between Cotton and Young Street, and that should be bidding July of 2014. So we have a lot of work that's really just on the cusp of being bid. Once again, this was our repave project along South High Street between Marion Drive and Garfield, that's been completed. The Cotton Street to Young Street repave of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard has been completed, and the sidewalk improvements along East Birdsong Street and MLK Boulevard. So in summary, this slide is just, goes over the exact same things that I've just talked to you about. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions about any of the particular projects.
Questions. Mr. Allen, how are you liking the new job?
It's wonderful.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Question on Magnolia Street, is that gonna be four-lane, three-lane, or what type of street or design?
It's going to be a four-lane. We are widening and adding some turn lanes at, I believe it's Horseshoe Lane that comes into it. We're adding in an additional turn lane to accommodate some of those movements, and we are making the improvements at the intersection of Hollybrook and Judson Road.
Yes, but it will be a four-lane street then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Garrett.
Mr. McPhee, when are you gonna come up with a new timeline chart for Cotton and Green Street? Because right now, you're just in the acquisition stage. Robin, can you go back to that timeline chart? For, we gonna come up with a new timeline because actually, the project was supposed to start sometime in February of this year, and it's falling back way back. What, yeah, I'm talking about Green Street and Cotton Street.
Yes, sir. And one of the, and I can adjust the bar chart, be happy to do that. The reason I left that is because that's kind of what we told you we would do, and so I want to hold ourselves accountable for what we said. The reason the Green Street bid was delayed, a part of it was due to right-of-way, the other part was due to the railroad underpass issues that we had, and we didn't want to close off that entire section of Green Street, north-south traffic. So that was our thinking on that particular time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay, Allen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation of special recognition for historic Longview Depot, Mr. Dietrich Johnson, liaison for the Mayor's Task Force from Passenger Rail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dietrich.
Hello, how are you this evening?
Wonderful, and you?
Good, good. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Bonds, it is my pleasure to present to you this evening a sneak preview of what's to come this weekend, this Saturday, May tenth, at eleven AM will be the official dedication ceremony of our historic depot. As you can see, we have a list of distinguished people who will be making remarks that evening and who will kick that off is our own Mayor Dean with the welcome. Joyce Smith will be our mistress of ceremony. Joyce Smith is the Amtrak's Business Liaison Director and also their greatest ambassador in terms of Amtrak. And I know the list of people that's noted there, the cast may be great, but I promise you, we have asked them to keep their remarks to two to three minutes each.
Are you gonna hold them to that too? Good luck. Okay.
Yes, we have. Everybody looks at the program and goes, oh, we will be there for a while. No, we promise you, we're gonna try to keep it under sixty minutes. And history of these grounds will be provided by Griff Hubbard, and I'll have to say, Griff is sharing history of these grounds because this will be his last year for forty-four years of service with Amtrak. He's officially retiring, and this event will be a big and great day for him. And also, the special honors will be presented by City Councilwoman, Cassia Williams, and as you can see, special honors will be going to Natalie Louise Rabicoff, Robert Tippett, also known as Bob Tippett, Tim Vaughn, and Griff Hubbard. And Councilwoman Williams will share with you more on that day in terms of why they will be honored. They each in their own way, over the many years, have made a significant contribution of the Texas Eagle and Amtrak service and the depot still being in service in Longview and without their tremendous support over the years, and especially a special thank you to Ms. Rabicoff, if she's still here for her service that she's given to the Texas Eagle over the years. And Joe McQ is Amtrak's Vice President of Government Affairs. This is a special treat for us as well as a community. We should be honored that he will be here to give us our dedicatory address. He does not make these public speeches in many places, in many cities throughout the year. So as a city of Longview, Texas, we should be proud of that he feels that he wants to be here and be part of our dedication ceremony. And before I take my seat, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to extend a most grateful thank you to the Alley Fest Committee for their support of Alley Fest and Historic Depot Days for letting us partner and be a part of that with them. Their visibility and marketing has tremendously made our event very well recognized, and wanted to say thank you to them.
Good deal. Any questions, Dietrich, about the ceremonies? Just a logistics question, Dietrich. There's no parking at the depot, correct?
There's limited parking at the depot, there's first come, first served kind of parking at the depot, but if there's no parking there, you will have to go downtown, take the shuttle and come back to the depot.
That's where my question is. So where do they pick up the shuttle?
They take the shuttle on Tyler Street, or?
No, on Cotton.
Cotton.
Cotton and?
Cotton and Center.
Cotton and Center. We need to make sure we get that word out because it's not on the invitation. It just says there's a shuttle available, it doesn't say where. So Cotton and Center. Okay. Maybe we put that on Channel five? Okay, go ahead, Cassia.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for your presentation. I have to acknowledge that Dietrich has the liaison to the Mayor's Task Force. Mayor Dean started this task force several years ago before I got on council, and as a transportation liaison, it has been a pleasure to work with him, and Dietrich has done a phenomenal job. Ms. Hill has done a great job as well, so I'd just like to give staff recognition for a job well done. I'm looking forward to it, and we're gonna really have a great time. So thank you, all of you, and thank you, Mayor, for starting this task force here in the City of Longview. We're one of the few. A lot of communities do not have a Mayor's Task Force on Passenger Rail. That is commendable, so thank you.
Well, one of the, one of the things I'll remember, that I believe it was two thousand and eight, where Ms. Joyce Smith from Amtrak, what is the proper terminology I should use? That she made us very well aware that our depot was less than a nice place. She referred to it as someone's messy living room, and that day, that meeting shortly thereafter, we created the task force. And I just want to say thank you to this council because this was the first time, and Ms. Rabicoff, one of the things she did not mention was this council stepped up, you know, in the middle of all this and said, hey, we're gonna get this right, and we made the decision collectively to put together a group of citizens to come together and work with the different governmental agencies to put this together, and that's the way it should be. And, and you know, everybody has different passions, but as council, we represent all eighty-six thousand people, and when you start spending taxpayer dollars on different people's passions, not everybody buys into that. So it was important that we had this task force that could go out and help in the public to provide information and make sure people understood how important that facility is. That's the future of Longview with, when you talk about... That's the future of Longview with, when you talk about, we started as a railroad community and, and now we're, we're getting back to the multimodal transportation program out there. So Dietrich, you have done a great job and you're to be commended for it and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Dietrich, what time does this program start?
11:00 a.m.
11? It starts at 11?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sidney.
Good time.
Okay, thank you very much, Dietrich. Okay, we have consent agenda, council, any items on consent agenda for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull agenda items D and H.
All right, do you have questions on those that we might be able to answer?
I got questions on those.
All right, well, let's go ahead and answer them, ask them if you want to. Go ahead. D is going to be, let's see, Rollin McPhee.
I was just kind of confused about a bidding process with?
D or B, excuse me?
Uh, D.
D, okay.
And H.
Yeah, okay, Rollin?
Mr. McAfee, I was kind of confused about the bidding process with Wicker Construction. Can you help me with that?
Yes, sir. To clarify it, the, we received bids on this in, in April, on, let's see, trying to think when we took bids.
It's on the letter that we have in front of us.
Okay, just kind of give me a quick, quick review of?
What, what the letter basically states is that the bids were opened and Excel Utilities' total base bid was lower than Wicker's base bid written in. There was a mathematical error.
Okay.
On Excel Utilities' bid, however, but state law prevents us from changing a bid proposal.
Okay.
And so our understanding that Excel will honor their bid proposal at that price. If their mathematics would have been correct.
Okay, great.
They would have been second bidder.
All right, thank you, Mr. McAfee.
And what other item?
Uh, with item H.
Item H. That's Sally Forbes.
Sally Forbes.
Forbes, okay. I, hey, before, before, we're going to add another city position, redefine a role such as city marshal and deputy city marshal, are we going to have to amend our budget to accommodate these two individuals?
No, sir. The three positions are already in existence in the police department. They're warrant officers is their current title. All we're doing is moving those three positions from the police department into the court. We're renaming the division instead of warrant division, city marshal's office.
City marshal.
And one of those positions will be the marshal and the other two will be the deputy marshals. The city marshal's position is vacant currently because we had a tenured employee that resigned. The starting salary for the city marshal is less than what that employee was making.
Okay.
So we'll actually end up with a cost savings.
All right, thank you, Madam.
Anything else?
Interesting.
All right, I have a motion in a second all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Zoning item, let's see, public hearing, consider application Z 1404. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family to, to general retail. This is located on approximately three-quarters of an acre, located at 110 Magnolia Lane. Get to the map. This is just an extension of an existing general retail boundary adjacent to residential. The comprehensive plan for this area, this is designated as medium density residential, but it's adjacent to medium intensity business, so it is adjacent, so it doesn't pose any legal issues. This is an aerial of where that's at. It's not representative because our aerials are a little outdated as far as the construction that's going on in this area. As some of the questions previously with the bond package, this section of Magnolia Lane is going to be under construction, widening to four lanes, kind of reflective of the redevelopment that's occurring in this area, but directly across the street. And I think I've got a better picture, kind of showing where this lot actually is, is directly across the street from where a new multifamily complex is going in. So this is just kind of proactive rezoning to, to be able to market the property for the future redevelopment of this area. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval as well as staff and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? This item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Is anyone here would like to speak to this matter? If not, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion second all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Action items, consider resolution denying the proposed rate increase requested by Atmos Energy. Jim Finley.
Mayor, council.
Like that new jacket, man.
Thank you, sir.
Good.
The city is a, is a member of Atmos Texas Municipalities Coalition and it's where we watched the gas side in this, in this area. On February 28, 2013, Atmos initiated a ratemaking proceeding with the, by submitting an application to increase the rates by $45.6 million. This would result in an increase of about a 9.2% increase in the base rate revenue. We engaged our consultants and to look at it and they determined with their review that, they came up with about $26.6 million for the increase. We entered into good faith negotiations with Atmos. We are working under a rate review mechanism. We were unable to reach that, so what we're going to, what we're recommending tonight is to deny the rate increase. It will go to the Railroad Commission. However, they will have the right to implement this rate increase effective June 1st. However, if the Railroad Commission does find a lower rate is in order, then a refund will, will, will come back to the consumers. The city, we, we had a conference call with the other cities in the, in the area and the executive committee and special counsel recommend that we deny the rate increase and go for the Railroad Commission this matter.
Okay, questions? Yes, sir. Ms. Mainly.
Pretty attractive electric rates because of our coal plants around here. How's, how do our gas rates compare with other parts of Texas?
They're, they're, they're the same. I mean, they're, they're pretty similar. The gas rates are fairly low and the utilities don't really make money off the, the gas rates. It's their cost of services and stuff.
Interesting, okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item B, to consider resolution accepting a donation of 4.31 acres of land from Humane Society in Northeast Texas for use of the site of the proposed animal shelter. Before Mr. Bonds starts, I want to thank the members of the Humane Society Board and other members for being here tonight. Would you mind standing up if we can recognize y'all? All right, thank you all. Thank you all very much for being here. Mr. Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor, council. As last council meeting, council authorized staff to contract with Conley Architects for the design of the animal shelter and following that meeting, the Humane Society graciously offered to donate the 4.3 acres and would like to recognize them as you have and we have been siding the animal shelter and it is, it is designed to fit on this track of land, so.
Okay, questions? Mr. Allen, he's going to be first contributor today.
Wait a minute. Not a question. I just want to say this is a win-win situation on two points. First, I believe personally and after looking at other animal shelters and going around town, that this is a good location. It's, I think it's out near Lear Park. Of course, I've driven by for many, many years going to work each morning, but I believe it's a good location, it's easily accessible and also it's a donation. So we're not spending money and we're getting a good location. It's a double win for the city, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Second all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, council, that's all of the business we have tonight. We have, let's see, items of community interest. Mr. John Sims.
For, for those of you who do, who do not listen to the radio very much, KNUE recognized one of our fire captains, Captain Billy Hodge, as a local hero and I want to congratulate him for this honor and it just shows how great our fire department really is.
Okay, good deal, thank you, sir. And congratulations to Billy. Billy's a good fireman. Okay, Mr. Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I got an opportunity, I think on the 1st of May. I went to the One Voice United in Prayer out at East Texas Christian Academy and it was in their adoptive leader program and I was great to be there and I enjoyed myself. And that photo there is just some of the children and they released some balloons. So that's all I had for that one. Number two is Kick the Boot Program, Mr. Mayor. All right.
You're dropping that 50 in there.
You're dropping that 50 in there for you. But it starts, I, I think the campaign's already begun. Am I right, chief?
They'll be out tomorrow, tomorrow, kick it off.
Tomorrow, kick it off on, on the Loop 281. So be careful when you're driving and drop 20 bucks in that, in that boot.
There you go. Don't be bashful, put the money.
To help these kids, because they have a mus, an MDA problem, which is muscular dyspharynx. I don't have a problem with that one, but would drop some money to help these kids to find a cure and prevention because it costs a lot of money to, to fund these particular type of education. Last thing I got is reminder, don't text and drive. The life you say just might be your own.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. Chief, I saw your picture there with Garrett. Did you see him put that 50 in there?
Yeah.
All right.
Are you going to say voting?
Ma'am?
Are you done voting?
Yeah.
Okay. I was asking the mayor, was he going to announce voting, of course?
Well, I don't have to now.
She's got that in, I'm sure. But, yeah, please go vote. Your vote is your voice. I'd like to share that I have been appointed to serve on the Texas Municipal League Policy on Regulation and Development Committee and had the opportunity to be in Austin. Really, it's important and I'm just honored to have an opportunity to serve on that level to have a position on things that affect all communities, water, infrastructure, the things that are important to all of us. And most importantly, one of the things we talked about was the importance of making or ensuring that cities and local municipalities, our responsibilities are not limited because we all know that politics begin on the local level. And so again, I've just, I'm really enjoying serving and I just wanted to share some things that are going on and last but not least, do join us at the train station this weekend. It's going to be phenomenal. This is such a great time for the city of Longview. We are clearly positioned with our mobility efforts and this is something, if you don't understand anything else, whether you love the trains, planes or buses or none of the above, one thing we can all relate to is the fact that of the, the revenue potential we can see on our tax base once this project is completed. So this is a great thing for our community and again, I just want to thank staff for all of their impact and, and everything that they've done on this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonds? Okay. Couple of things. What's the first slide, Robin? Oh. Oh, my gosh. Was this the mayor and me? I'm laughing at him trying to operate a pair of scissors.
Man, that's a big pair of scissors.
We, we took away all heavy equipment from him.
That's a big old piece of, that's a big old.
But this, the compost site obviously has been open for several months now. We had the official dedication today. One of the things I was impressed with since we opened up our compost site in 2006, I believe was the year, we've accumulated over 100,000 tons of recyclable materials. That's materials that would have been burned, dumped on the side of the road or put into our landfill. So this is a great thing for the environment. Secondly, it's a great, great service for our citizens because you know, our citizens can come, drop their materials there at no charge, can take at least one, I'm surprised how many of my fellow citizens still don't know, you can take one free load of compost every week out of this recycle center. So a great service for the citizens because of the size of this place. Dave Wimmerly, who's there, there speaking, as you can see, he's doing a great job running that place, got a great group out there too. Met them this morning. They're looking at providing some additional services to citizens and people outside of our city for a fee. So that's a potential revenue for our city to help actually fund the cost of this place and it is an extremely professionally run operation. I was just very impressed and always have been. So congratulations to all the folks out at the compost pile. Next, I want to make an announcement as the liaison to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I want to tell everyone that on Channel 5 and also on our website at longviewtexas.gov, we have a video running that gives all of our citizens an update on where we are on this comprehensive plan. I think it's very well done. Also want to, once again, thank all the two dozen or more people who are involved in this committee and also this is the vision that they created for those of us as citizens in Longview that their goal is to, for our city, is to be a premier community promoting education, business opportunities and cultural diversity, capitalizing on our heritage and natural beauty, focusing on families and healthy living and creating a safe, welcoming environment that attracts vibrant people to call Longview home. So real proud of the work that they're doing. One more thing, I've got a text here from Steve Crane with the details. I want to announce that there's a, also a springing into good health too sponsored by the Special Health Resources for Texas and the Longview NAACP. This Saturday, May 17th, from 10 to 2, up in my district at Spring Hill Assembly of God, which is at 5115 Gilmer Road. There's screenings for blood pressure, diabetes, HIV, hepatitis C, eligibility screening for special health, wellness point Medicaid, healthy food demo, a jump station sponsored by Beacon Hospice, recycling for a healthier environment, enrollment in the Affordable Care Act and more, believe it or not, informing and plugging people into local healthcare and opportunities. So I want to thank NAACP and the other groups, groups involved in that, that's a great service they're providing to that part of town. It is, it is not, I mean, it's the 17th, not this Saturday, but? Oops. The following Saturday, correct? Thank you very much. Okay. I saw you, you brought Vic out of his chair, so I knew. What? Saturday, May 17th, not this Saturday. All right. Lastly, and I'll make this quick, Amber Wood did have the big dedication this past week. Amber Wood, as you know, is quality, affordable housing for working folks. This is a great addition to our city. In addition to that, they've helped fund Pinnacle who built this Amber Wood, which by the way, is at Hawkins and McCann. 78 families are already in this place, is fully leased up after a month with a waiting list. So there's clearly a demand, as I've said all along, for this kind of housing. They had an art project that they funded, six local kids with some professional artists did this mural. Folks, if you have a chance, drive up to Hawkins and McCann, drive to the back of the development. There's a huge cinder wall that got Earl Roberts' big old head on one end. His family and I were just laughing about this because we knew Earl would laugh at it if he saw it. It was dedicated to Earl's memory and also had our friend Neil McCoy and Matthew McConaughey on the other end and all sorts of other things about the history of our city on this mural. It was just a great project and congratulations to Amber Wood and Pinnacle. I was telling Richard, as thin as the late mayor was, it probably didn't take a whole lot of paint to paint his picture, God bless him. Sherman Williams, Sherman Williams dedicated all the materials and the supplies for this mural and that was Emily Marks up at Sherman Williams over on Wall Street. So thank you for saying that. Okay, Mr. Allen?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything left to say.
I'm sorry.
Follow that. I would like to talk a financial matter here just for a little bit. The budget through eight months, city of Longview on sales tax revenue, right now we're running 4% ahead of last year and through the guidance of the city staff and Mayor Dean and city manager David Willard, we originally budgeted for a 2% increase, so fortunately we're running ahead and we'll probably be able to build a little more reserve at the end of this year. And thank you for the people that have participated in the economy of the city of Longview. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, they, one thing, Richard was talking about that, that compost, you can get a truckload, but don't go showing up at one of them big, big trucks you got out there at the scrapyard. You know, he'll, he'll show up with that four yarder. Okay, well, election day is Saturday, May 10th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Broughton Recreation Center, 801 South MLK Boulevard for District 3 voters, please go vote. It's, again, it's, it's something as, as Americans we get, doesn't cost us a thing and please go voice with your vote. City of Longview and Longview Main Street are joining forces to celebrate Alley Fest and Historic Depot Days on Friday, May 9th through Saturday, May 10th. This year, Alley Fest is partnering with the city of Longview to celebrate the grand opening of the renovated historic train depot. In addition to the annual alley art, music fest, kids fest and alley run activities, the event will also feature tours of the historic depot, the Amtrak exhibit train, the historic central fire station, an antique car show, and other nineteen forties era activities. For more information about the event, contact nine oh three, two-three-seven, four thousand, or go to the website, www dot alleyfest dot org or longviewtexas dot gov slash depot. That's all the announcements I have. And if this computer will come back on, I'll tell you that we will now adjourn to executive session consultation with attorneys under Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one-point oh-seven-one, to deliberate and consider appraisers submitted by Wesco Family Limited Partnership and our counter offer slash counter proposal from Wesco Family Limited Partnership regards the sale of real property interest related to the Four Street Extension Project, discuss legal issues relating to pending condemnation, and acquire legal advice from city attorneys regarding evaluation of new appraisers and legal issues relating to the acquisition condemnation of such real properties. The city council may reconvene in public for action on the above items discussed in a closed meeting or executive session. We are now adjourned.